All set.
Wonderful. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I believe we have our eight commissioners, do we not Pam?
Uh, y- yes.
Would you mind calling role?
We'll do so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brankard, are you here?
I'm here, but I should let the commission know that I will be here for less than an hour, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully I'm not ruining the court.
Commissioner Condalaria, are you present? Commissioner Dominguez?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Fry?
I'm here.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Present.
Commissioner Modi? Commissioner Patton?
I'm here.
Good morning. Commissioner Raider?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Good morning, I'm here.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Buenos dias, present.
Commissioner V Hill? Commissioner Zemlik? Vice Chair Cypher? I know you're here. There you go. Um, I'm gonna circle back up. Commissioner Condalaria, have you joined?
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Modi, have you joined? Commissioner V Hill? Let me just see who's in the waiting room real quick here. Let's see if we have any. We don't have any commissioners in the waiting room. Commissioner Zemlik, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Good morning. Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair, you do have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, we will then need to move to the second item on our agenda, which is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner McWilliams will second that.
Wonderful. We have a first and second. Can you do the roll call again, uh, Ms. Jones?
Yes, I wanted to confirm the, the motion was made by Commissioner Brankard? Okay, thank you.
That is correct. Yep, that's correct.
Very good. And your vote, Commissioner Brankard?
Yes.
Commissioner Condalaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Uh, has Commissioner Modi joined? Okay. Commissioner Patton, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Raider?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Has Commissioner V Hill joined us? Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cypher, your vote?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our commission, our next item on the agenda is the amendments. If, uh, there are no amendments to the minutes, we can accept a motion. Does anyone have any amendments or concerns?
Uh, Vice Chair? This Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Uh, on, have one small amendment. That would be on page six. Line two, four, nine. It indicates, uh, motion passed eight to zero with four commissioners absent. That four needs to be stricken and replaced with six. There were six commissioners absent.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez.
I will make the suggested.
Any further, uh, comments on the minutes? Commissioner Dominguez, with that amendment, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Vice Chair, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brankard.
All right, we will do a roll call, vote on the, to approve the amended minutes. Commissioner Brankard, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Condalaria?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Raider?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Just checking to make sure nobody else has joined us. Thank you. And, uh, Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Wonderful, thank you Pam. So, uh, item four on our agenda today is, uh, public comment. I did see one person mention that they had something that they would like to share. Uh, Ms. Jones, do you have any other people that are signed up or have?
Yes, I had one other reach out. We have two that would like to make general public comment this morning.
Okay, that would be good. So, let's move forward with that. Who is the first?
Stephen Fry.
Okay. Mr. Fry?
Hello guys, hello commission. Uh, my name is Stephen Fry and I'm the projects and policy specialist for Amigos Bravo's, a statewide nonprofit focused on protecting and restoring New Mexico's water since nineteen eighty-eight. I appreciate the time to speak with you today and I want to thank the Service Water Quality Bureau for their continued efforts to protect and monitor New Mexico's waters, as well as reviewing and making changes in response to our comments on the Upper Rio Grande TMDL report. The additions to the executive summary, including clarifications on the actual impairments mentioned in the report, and the reference to the entire integrated list are extremely helpful. I would also like to commend the Service Water Quality Bureau for their acknowledgement that additional water testing is necessary and the need to enlist outside partners and agencies to help in these efforts, particularly to supplement the existing water quality monitoring survey program, which only monitors New Mexico's waterways about once every ten years, as well as in response to emergency events that could alter water quality such as wildfires and their post-event runoff. Following the update to the TMDL report and responses to public comment, I would like to add three additional comments today. The first is protocols to address new impairments on ONRWs. The report mentions numerous new impairments on ONRW streams in the focus area since their original designation. This commission is fully aware of the effort and resources that go into an ONRW designation petition, having approved two additional petitions earlier this summer. Thank you again for your efforts there. However, from reviewing this report and expanding the analysis to O, to all ONRW streams, it is apparent that these waters, which are supposed to be the most protected in the state, are still experiencing degradation. And more importantly, steps to mitigate these degradations are not being taken. Amigos Bravo strongly recommends that protocols be established to address impairments on ONRW streams. We have suggested sample language and protocols that could be implemented in the state's water management plan, US Forest Service management plans, regional water plans, and in conversations with NMED, BLM, and other land management agencies. In particular, we would like to see water quality sampling frequency increase should an impairment occur, and a stakeholder meeting with interested parties, the original petitioner, and the land manager slash owner take place to investigate the cause of the impairment and devise an action plan for addressing it. The second is water quality monitoring. As already mentioned, New Mexico's streams are only surveyed for water quality about once every ten years. Additionally, the surveys are currently being done, only monitor perennial waters, and do not survey intermittent or ephemeral streams, which make up the vast majority of New Mexico's waters. As our state continues to experience stressors to our watersheds through more arid climates, fire, and increased development demand, we need to acknowledge the impact these non-perennial streams have on our watersheds and their contributions to overall water quality and quantity. In order to properly protect our waters, we need to monitor more waterways more frequently, and the Service Water Quality Bureau should seek additional funding and capacity to bolster the survey program, as well as incorporate new partnerships with other agencies, local organizations, schools, hunters and anglers, and other recreationists groups who frequent these waterways and can help take water samples. Amigos Bravo believes the water community in New Mexico is a considerable strength and should be developed accordingly to help with the monitoring and implementation of restoration activities on our waterways. The third is just a follow-up on TMDLs. Currently, the TMDL process investigates the causes of impairments to designated uses on New Mexico streams and develops potential actions that could take place to address it. However, once the TMDL is approved by the EPA, there is no requirement or program to enact those proposed actions, and they basically sit as paper on a shelf. While Amigos Bravo understands the Service Water Quality Bureau does not have the authority to change TMDL language, we strongly encourage this commission to investigate potential options for implementing TMDLs and ensuring that impaired waters are removed from the integrated list. Thank you again for allowing me to voice these comments today, and I'm open to working with members of this commission and other stakeholders to improve our state's processes in an effort to protect and restore New Mexico's waters. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Who is the next on the list there?
I have Santa Fe County Commissioner Anna Hansen ready to speak. Good morning.
Uh, good morning, Vice Chair and commission members. Um, I'm a Santa Fe County Commissioner Anna Hansen, and I'm, um, I want to speak to you about, um, item number six on your agenda. I am quite concerned that your chair, your former chair, um, of the WQCC, um, went to work for the NNSA, um, just recently, and that she ruled on a number of orders relating to, uh, item number six. And I feel like those, um, rulings should be vacated because it's a conflict of interest. Um, and there is precedent in your own, uh, rules, uh, such as in, um, the first pattern is, is very similar, uh, to the disqualification, disqualifications of DP eleven thirty-two hearing Officer Aaron Anderson in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen timeframe, because while she was making rulings during the public hearing, she had applied and been interviewed and accepted a job with NNSA. Uh, it seems to me this is a complete conflict of interest and does not look good for our, um, state to be, um, having somebody who is the chair applying for a job, who they are ruling for or against. And, um, I would really appreciate you vacating the three orders that she, um, made uh, under this commission and, um, and move forward and allow this, uh, petition, uh, by CCNS to, uh, move forward without disqualifications. Um, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Um, and I thank you all for the work that you do to protect our waters. Um, I support what, uh, Amigos Bravo's has said. I have worked for many, many years as a commissioner to protect our waters through, uh, WOTUS. I sit, have sat on the NACO, National Association of Counties, um, Energy, Environment, and Land Use Board, and am a vice chair of the water quality, uh, the air quality and the energy quality, uh, board. And, um, I have worked because I believe that WOTUS, we need a primacy rule here, and we don't have that, and I feel that is extremely important. It's something that we need to be working on, um, so that we are protected, uh, because at the moment we only have the EPA. And like Mr. Fry said, uh, our streams and, um, that are perennial and ephemeral, uh, need protection also, and we as a state need to work on that. So I respectfully, I request that you vacate the order under disqualification, especially since you have precedent to do that, and I appreciate you allowing me the time to make comments. Thank you very much, commissioners.
Commissioner Hansen, thank you for your comments today, and Mr. Fry. Uh, a- as you know, uh, Counselor Sanchez, uh, I am relying on you today for any procedural, uh, assistance you can provide me. Uh, as, as receiving these comments, no action, uh, is, uh, will be considered at this time if I understand that right. And, uh, what would be the steps forward in addressing the two comments we received today?
Vice Chair, uh, Cypher, good morning. Be correct. Uh, they are exactly what they were, um, invited to be, which are public comments. The commission, if it, if it gets to those matters, uh, with respect to action that it subsequently takes, uh, will certainly be, uh, considerate of those comments, but there is nothing that needs to be done further this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Uh, with that, um, we'll move to, i- i- unless the, there's other comments from the commission, we'll move to agenda item five. Okay, hearing, hearing no other comments. Agenda item five is in regards to WQCC twenty-two thirty-three, Surface Water Quality Bureau's petition for approval of the total maximum daily load for the Upper Rio Grande watershed. Counselor Sanchez, will you please, uh, provide us a recap of the main points?
Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. Vice Chair Cypher, members of the commission, good morning. Uh, if the commission will recall, this matter came before, uh, the commission at its last meeting on October the eleventh. And also, if you'll recall, Mrs. Weatherly, counsel for NMED, uh, did a lengthy presentation why the commission should not consider adoption or approval of a TMDL as rulemaking activity. You also now have in the packet that, um, Pam provided you her, um, and it's, it's on the docket as well, her eighteen-page legal memorandum in support of NMED's position. Uh, and finally, by way of background or, or prior action, uh, the commission will recall that there was a motion on the floor, to the effect that adoption or approval of a TMDL constitutes rulemaking activity, uh, on inquiry, uh, from, Commissioner Branker to then Vice, then Chair Stringer, uh, that motion was withdrawn and no further action was taken on it. Uh, there's the, there's a couple of ways to cast today's question for the commission. One is the more general way, which is whether the adoption or approval of a total maximum daily load for a water course in New Mexico constitutes rulemaking under New Mexico, New Mexico appellate court precedent and under applicable water quality control rules and regulations. The, the more narrow or specific way to consider the issue is whether the Surface Quality Bureau's petition for approval of a TMDL for the Upper Rio Grande watershed, uh, filed solely pursuant to section seventy-four dash six dash three E of, uh, the Water Quality Control Act, uh, meets the requirements for commencement of a post-rulemaking before the Water Quality Control Commission. And just very briefly, seventy-four dash six dash three states, and this is the premise for the Surface Water Quality Bureau's petition is, the commission is a state water pollution control agency for the state for all purposes of the Federal Clean Water Act. Pam, if you would, um, screen share, please. What I'd like to go to first is a brief review or recap of some of the relevant language and holdings in Rio Hondo Land and Cattle Company. And what Pam has scrolled down to is about midway down the first page of the memorandum of opinion, and I think so we all have context, is it's important, I think, to recognize the definition of a TMDL, and this again is from the appellate court opinion and Court of Appeals' opinion in Rio Hondo. A TMDL is a document that includes, in part, calculations of the maximum amount of pollutants that a water body can receive while maintaining state water quality standards. I'll go ahead and, uh, bypass all the citations to federal law, the federal statute and federal law, code of federal regulations. Uh, goes on to say the standards consist of water designated uses and water quality criteria necessary to protect those waters. Again, Pam, if you'll scroll down a bit, um, and, and ba- basically with, with the Court of Appeals, so, to just to expedite things, it basically says that a TMDL, TMDL is basically the amount of allowable pollution in a water course. Um, the the Court of Appeals in Rio Hondo, after opining that the, in this case, a twenty sixteen TMDL character in implementing the Water Quality Act fell within the definition of regulation, and I use that as a term of art articulated in the New Mexico Administrative Code at twenty point one point three point seven A eighteen NMAC, and I'll go into that shortly. And, uh, that the fact, and this is, I think, pivotal, that the twenty sixteen TMDL affected persons and entities who are regulated by the Water Quality Control Commission, and the New Mexico Environment Department concluded that the TMDL was properly considered a regulation under both applicable administr- administrative code and statute. Um, the, the, the citation that the court referenced in, in its, in its language, the language I've just read, is, Pam, if you'll go to twenty point one point three point seven, please.
Hang on one second. Twenty-one.
And while Pam is bringing that regulation up first, I just, the commission will notice that, uh, twenty-one point three point seven, uh, specifically subsection A eighteen, it's a definition, uh, is part of the Water Quality Control Commission's adjudicatory procedures. Um, well, go ahead Pam, if you'll bring that up, please.
I had it up. Hang on one second. There you go.
If you'll scroll down to seven, uh, A, A, A eighteen, please. And again, this is from the Water Control, uh, Water Quality Control Commission's, uh, adjudicatory procedures. So a regulation under those procedures is defined as any rule or standard promulgated by the commission to implement, in this case, the Water Quality Control Act. But the other and more immediate and more specific regulation that pertains here is twenty point one point six point seven R. Pam, if you'll, I'll bring that up, please. And again, uh, a reminder to the commission, the twenty point one point six, uh, all pertains to the rulemaking procedures promulgated by the Water Quality Control Commission.
And where do you need me to scroll, counsel?
Go down to R, please.
There you go.
Thank you. The, the, this particular definition or regulation, if Pam, if you can slide the bar over slightly to uh, the right, that way the commission will be able to see the full definition. Great, thank you.
Okay.
That works. Thank you. Regulation is defined under the commission's rulemaking procedures as any rule, regulation, or standard, of which a TMDL would be one, promulgated by the commission, and this is, I think, pivotal to, to what we're considering or what the commission is considering, and affecting one or more persons besides the commission and the department. The exception that follows is it doesn't pertain here. Uh, that, that, that's it. That's basically it. And a recap, I'll just mention, as I've said, uh, Council Weatherly gave a lengthy presentation at the last meeting. She's provided the commission with an eighteen-page memorandum in support of the department's position that, uh, TMDLs do not constitute rulemaking. But just, just summarily, I, I would just make a couple of comments. One is, the the, the department went, went to great lengths to basically review how other states or jurisdictions consider TMDLs, particularly whether they consider them or whether they constitute rulemaking or not. What other jurisdictions have or have not done by way of TMDLs really isn't pertinent here because we have a New Mexico legal precedent. We have the, uh, Rio Hondo opinion. I think that is controlling. Uh, so we, we, however helpful, uh, looking at other jurisdictions might be, we have a very specific, uh, precedent in New Mexico that tells us that a TMDL does constitute a rule. And, uh, also, I, I think, uh, Mrs. Weatherly spent some time, uh, letting the commission know that prior to this, the commission had adopted or approved a number of TMDLs without going through the rulemaking process. And I, all I can see that very, very simply and very shortly is, uh, we, we didn't have the precedent that we do now, and if we did, uh, I think they may have been like a one-year overlap. Um, the Court of Appeals' opinion issued, let me look at that very quickly. Uh, it was, it was filed November sixth, twenty nineteen, and I think the last two TMBLs approved or adopted by the commission were for the Hemis River watershed and Blue Lake, uh, water. The findings on those were April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and, uh, April, the same day for both, actually. So we do have an instance, uh, where the commission, subsequent to the precedent in Rio Hondo, uh, approved or adopted two TMDLs without going through the rulemaking process. I, I think that was, uh, in error, and we don't need to repeat that same mistake. Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Cypher, members of the commission.
I'm sorry, I was talking away with my mute on, sorry. Uh, but thank you, Counselor Sanchez. We'll now open it up to the commission for any comments they may have. Commissioner Brankard?
Uh, thank you, commissioners. Thank you for that, uh, concise summary of the decision that I think is biting on us in this situation, whether we like it or not. Um, so, but I'm, I'm curious. I thought there was an implication here that the petition, that we could characterize the petition filed by the Environment Department several months ago as, uh, a petition for rulemaking. Did I hear that correctly?
No, Commissioner Brankard, I, if you did, I either misspoke myself or wasn't sufficiently clear. The present petition, uh, was filed pursuant to a, a completely different statute. It doesn't, uh, a- as, as the commission knows, there's a, a specific, uh, regulation, a procedure for, uh, petitioning commission for rulemaking. The present petition does not comply with, uh, those or that requirement. That, those requirements or that requirement.
Okay, so, uh, I, I assume your position then, counsel, is that the Environment Department should file a petition for rulemaking on, under twenty point one point six and move this forward?
Should the commission decide that in this case, uh, or in, or gen- more generally, that TMDLs constitute rulemaking? Yes, that would be the appropriate course.
Well, I, I, just, just generally, Mr. Vice Chair, Acting Chair, um, uh, I, I support counsel's position. I think the Court of Appeals, while I don't necessarily agree with their conclusion, uh, their conclusion is their conclusion that, uh, TMDLs are rules under our regulations and under the State Rules Act, and therefore we have to file, follow a rulemaking procedure uh, to enact though, which we do all the time, enact rules. And so I guess I don't see what the big deal here is here. But anyway, I mean, certainly big deal here is here. But anyway, I mean, certainly, we can try to change it in the future. But as for the current proposal before us, I think that has to go through a rulemaking process, and I would support counsel in that regard.
Thank you, Counselor. Brother, let's see here. Commissioner Dominguez, I'd like to recognize you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. Let me kind of follow up with Commissioner Brinkard's comments. I, whether I like it or not, I, I pretty much concur with what Commissioner Brinkard has indicated. I think the Court of Appeals' opinion pretty much ties our hands. I'm, as far as how TMDLs are classified. With that said, I think there's, for me, there's kind of one looming question, and that is, because the commission is not the final, does not have the final say-so on TMDLs, how do you do rulemaking when it still has to go to EPA for approval or disapproval? So I think it's procedurally, it throws a kink in the rulemaking process. And, and maybe has some guidance on that. That looks like kind of a sticky point there that may slow the process down. And with that said, also would, would throw out there that, in the meantime, if the Environment Department sees fit to either pursue through legislature, amending the Water Quality Act and/or the State Rules Act to provide an exemption, that may be something that the Environment Department wants to take a closer look at.
That's all I have at the moment, Vice Chair Cypher. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Counselor Sanchez, would you like to comment?
Just very quickly, and the folks from NMED, their president here can correct me if I'm misstating this, but we have, Commissioner Dominguez, we have a number of other instances where matters that go under the rulemaking authority of the commission go before the EPA for final, final approval. And the one instance, and the very big instance, is the triennial review. My recollection is that, that, well, that my recollection, that is something that is done under the rulemaking procedures for, for the commission has promulgated. And my recollection is that that goes to EPA for, for final review. And I can be corrected if, if that's a misstatement. Thank you.
Mr. Brinkard, you took your hand back down, but did you have a comment?
Just on that point, I see Mr. Thompson's hands up, too, Commissioner. We do this all the time with regulations under federal delegated programs. Commissioner Dominguez, Mr. Dominguez was chair six years ago, plus, when we came in for changes for the UIC rules for refineries. And that was six years ago when the commission approved it. Last, this past January, the EPA finally blessed it. So for over five years, that commission regulation was in limbo because EPA had not acted on it. So yes, this happens all the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I read the draft memorandum prepared by EPA, NMED, and I was confused. They seem to disagree with the Court of Appeals. They use words like misconstrued, impact of a TDL as a regulation and so forth. And, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'd like to ask, should we give the NMED an opportunity to respond to the comments by Counsel Sanchez?
Certainly, Commissioner Thompson, if, if you would like to hear from them, I'm certainly open to that.
I think it would be appropriate. Again, it's a different, if it's a different approach. And, and I was quite surprised to have a, a legal document that's, that seems to imply that appeals court got it wrong is remarkable.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there, who do we have with us today that would like to comment on that from NMED? Yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher and members of the commission. I appreciate the opportunity to respond on behalf of my client, NMED. NMED does believe that the Court of Appeals reasoning is wrong, and that a TMDL is not a regulation. And, and our reasoning is outlined in the memorandum that I submitted to the commission. Under the rules that, that Counselor discussed today, the, the definitions of regulation require first that the, that the regulation is, well, a rule or regulation, which is circular, and doesn't really get us anywhere, or also that it's a standard. And NMED agrees that a TMDL is, you know, affects more than one person besides the commission and the department. But under those definitions, it first has to be a standard. And it is not a standard. It upholds the standards, but it itself is not a standard. And so that is the nuance where NMED feels that the, the Court of Appeals got it wrong. And our purpose for the memorandum was to point out that requiring a rulemaking for every TMDL that comes before the commission is not the only option moving forward in light of the Court of Appeals' decision. And that memorandum outlines our position on other options moving forward that would ultimately, you know, not replace, but, you know, trump the Court of Appeals' decision should another matter come before them that, that addresses the same issue. Our position is that a rulemaking is not the only path forward. It's, it is very extensive and is heavy on resources for the department. It doesn't add to any additional public participation. As you know, that a TMDL under the Clean Water Act requires a public comment period. The reason why we listed a number of other states and how they address TMDLs is to, to, one, reiterate that it is not a Clean Water Act requirement for the commission to approve a TMDL. A TMDL must be approved by EPA. But the, as other states have shown in their process, there are options for submitting to TM, submitting TMDLs to EPA without having to go through the process of having the commission approve them. And the other reason why we listed what other states are doing is to open the conversation for ideas for how to address TMDLs going forward. It's the department's position that the commission has agreed with them. And as Commissioner Brinkard said today, that, that it's, that the Court of Appeals may have gotten this, you know, wrong, and TMDL is not a regulation. And if we're on the same side of that position, then we can work together to move forward in finding a solution that doesn't involve the extensive resources that a rulemaking would entail. And with that, if, with your permission, I would like to invite my client to also make a comment if they would, would like to. Not that they have to, but I, I don't know if Shelley Lemon would like to add to what I have said.
Thank you, Counselor Weatherly. Shelley, would you like to comment?
Vice Chair Cypher and commissioners, I, I don't think I need to add anything to what Counselor said. I, I do want to stress, we, we do not think that a TMDL is a regulation or a standard. It is a calculation that uses, one of the components of the calculation is the water quality standard. And it, that's how you figure out how much pollutant can be assimilated into the stream that we're evaluating. So it has the standard in the calculation. It is not in and of itself a standard. And as Counselor Weatherly pointed out, there are other options besides moving forward with a rulemaking. A rulemaking, I don't think would provide any additional benefit because we have the rule already in NMAC in 20.6.4. So with that, I will end my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Commissioner Thompson, did you have more comments?
Yeah, a quick follow-up. And I agree with, with everything that Counsel Weatherly and Ms. Lemon said about the, the, what a TMDL is and how onerous it would be to change the procedures and have it officially implemented or adopted as a rulemaking procedure. But nonetheless, the Court of Appeals rather explicitly said that this is a rulemaking. And, and so I don't see how we can go against that. And with that, I'll stand down. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Dominguez, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. Just a quick follow-up for Ms. Weatherly is, you referred to this not being a standard. And I think we all, in our mind, kind of understand what a standard is. But I looked through the statute and all the NMACs looking for a definition of standard within our statute and regulations, and I did not find a definition of standard. Did I overlook that? Or is there a definition that I just flat missed?
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Excuse me. I, I think you're correct that there isn't a definition in our NMAC for standard. And I don't know if Ms. Lemon, if I, if I'm getting that wrong, but I, I think you're correct. There isn't a specific definition of standard. One, one option that the department has discussed that wasn't outlined in the memorandum was to add definitions to 20.6.4 that would clarify TMDLs, other planning documents, and perhaps standard could be included in that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. And my reasoning on that was, again, trying to parse out what the Court of Appeals indicated. I think we're, those of us that have been involved with, with stuff for quite a while, in our minds, we, we kind of know what, what we're talking about when we say a standard. Unfortunately, when we get down to the legal side of it, it, it goes to what's in black and white. And so where, where I'm stuck in this is kind of right in line with Commissioner Thompson's comments. Completely agree with what the Environment Department has, has said that I don't think there was ever a real intent for TMDLs to be considered a regulation or a rule. But we're also stuck with the Court of Appeals opinion there. And the fact that that, although that opinion on this being a rule was kind of a sidebar from the actual merits of that case, it's still within the opinion. And even though the commission and Environment Department prevailed in that case, I suppose, because this came up in, in discussion as that moved through, neither the commission nor Environment Department appealed that portion of the Court of Appeals' opinion. And probably rightly so, because both parties actually prevailed in the outcome of that. So, but we're stuck with what the Court of Appeals indicated. So I, I don't see any end around because we basically have case law. And we may have to look at opportunities for a path forward. But in the meantime, I'm really kind of stuck that we have case law that we have to follow until a different path has, has been figured out. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I think this has been a great discussion. I would like to move forward with the motion. But first, want to give an opportunity to anybody who has not had an opportunity to add clarification or their thoughts. Is there any further comments? Absent of that, I think that the comments made are exactly my feeling. I, I see that we've got a Court of Appeals' decision, and I don't know how we do anything different than, than what the law is telling us to do, except to perhaps change the law down the road. But at, at hand is a motion to either, by, by the commission to either make a decision that a TMDL constitutes a rulemaking, or it does not. So approval or adoption of the total maximum daily load by the commission, whether that constitutes rulemaking or not. And I would accept whether that constitutes rulemaking or not, and I would accept a motion to to that effect, to one of those choices. Thank you. I appreciate your your humor, Commissioner Brankert. Thank you for your smiles.
All right, I'll try this. The Commission moves to deny the Surface Water Qualities Bureau's petition for approval on the basis that we require a rulemaking in this regard, and we request that the New Mexico Environment Department file a petition for rulemaking under 20.1.6 NMAC.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Thompson, I second the motion.
Thank you. Pam, can you perform a roll call, please?
Yes, Vice Chair. Commissioner Brankert, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Condolaria?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
With full apologies to Shelley, I vote yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Regretfully, yes.
Commissioner Raider?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velasquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I I also would just like to state for the record that the Commission appears to be very supportive of NMED. Unfortunately, we just don't see a way forward with the Court of Appeals decision. I think we need to support the law. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So with that, we're moving to item six on the agenda. We need to, in reviewing this, recognize that the Commission's already addressed this issue, and we've agreed to review the permit after after the Environmental Appeals Board outcome. However, we've been asked to reconsider. And so in today's consideration, we'll need to affirm or reconsider the Commission's previous order staying the decision until after the Environmental Appeals Board outcome. So we'll open it up for discussion at this point. And I'd like to hear what the Commission has to say about that after hearing all that we've heard previously, if we would like to move forward with a motion or if we need to get more information. Commissioners? Okay.
Ms. Cypher, this is Commissioner Patton?
Yes. I think it would be useful to hear from each of the parties on this one. Okay. I I hope I hope that what we'll hear is some new information that we can consider. I I really don't want a large rehash of the same things we've heard before. I I for one really want to listen to the Environmental Appeals Board outcome before I would make a an additional decision. But with that being said, Commissioner Brankert, you've got a comment?
Yes, I I need to leave, but I just I just think that this motion is sort of entangled with the new motion to vacate all orders of the Commission. And I guess I would just look to Counsel Sanchez for a way forward on trying to untangle all of this.
Counselor Sanchez? Vice Chair Cypher, if I could respond to Commissioner Brankert?
Please.
Thank you. The the motion at this point that's been filed to vacate all the previous, and I think it was there was a misstatement. The 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 vice the the chair does nothing more than act for the entire Commission. So when the Commission Chair enters and orders, he or she is not doing it individually, but rather for and on behalf of the entire Commission. The the pending motion for disqualification is is still premature. The NMED and Triad and Landau still have 15 days in which to respond to the motion. And in turn, CCNS and Hope would have time to file a reply to those responses. That that motion is still premature. It's not before the Commission. And I there's two ways to look at this. One is in reaffirming if it does that, its previous order. In effect, it's doing it in the absence of a a chair who is alleged to have had a conflict, a disqualifying conflict. So the affirmance, if that's what the Commission's preference was, would I think remove that taint. But nonetheless, if that isn't the case, the Commission, I think, can go forward with business as required. This matter is before the Commission and only until the motion of disqualification has been fully briefed and heard by the Commission, would there be a reason to not proceed forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. Commissioner Dominguez?
Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. I believe Counsel Sanchez pretty much covered the question that I had, which was the only motion that's in front of the Commission right now is the reconsideration on the order to stay and that the motion that was filed late Friday, no reference to that can be or should be referred to or heard today. Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher.
Thank you, Counselor Dominguez, or excuse me, Commissioner Commissioner Dominguez. Counselor Sanchez, we have Counselor Lindsay Lovejoy, who would like to speak with us. Is that in order at this point?
Vice Chair Cypher, that's entirely the prerogative of the Commission. That that's not for me to say. If the Commission's preference is to hear from Counsel Lovejoy and Counsel for NMED and Triad and for the remaining parties, that's certainly the prerogative of the Commission.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there? Well, what I think I'd like to do is Counselor Lovejoy, I'd like to give you one or two minutes, but can you keep it very brief?
I'll do so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Right now, okay. One actually has to refer to this as some kind of a elephant in the room. The main point is that when there is an actual conflict of interest involved, the rules change. We briefed a a motion to vacate the stay on the assumption that the stay had been validly entered. And that in some sense, the burden is on us to show that it should be vacated. If there is an actual conflict of interest in a decision maker, which is clearly the case here, that burden doesn't apply. The rules are different. There is, I don't know, you could call it a presumption or conclusive presumption that the orders entered in which Chair Stringer participated are invalid. And so it is sort of a false position to be arguing a motion to vacate the stay on the assumption that it was validly entered when we know it wasn't. We would like to postpone the argument of the first motion, the one that's completely briefed, until after the motion to vacate the orders entered under Commissioner Springer. Stringer. There was a leading case on this called Al Nashiri in the Court of Appeals for the D.C. Circuit, where the court said that all entered orders entered under the aegis of a disqualified judge had to be vacated, period. And then the proceeding can commence again. And that's where we are here. The court said requiring Al Nashiri, who was a defendant there, to proceed under the long shadow of all those orders, even if enforced by a new impartial military judge, would inflict an irreparable injury, unfixable on direct review. Al Nashiri thus has no adequate remedy for Speth's conduct, the judge, other than to scrub Speth's orders from the case at the earliest opportunity. I suggest that that's where we stand now. We should allow the motion to vacate the disqualified orders to proceed. The motion concerning vacating the stay on the assumption that it was validly entered is no longer relevant until after that other motion is decided.
Counselor Lovejoy, thank you for your input. Counselor Sanchez, can you? It looks like you have your hand raised.
Just just a very quick point before counsel, other counsel addresses the Commission. Let's let's just be clear. So the Commission isn't misled. What we have now on the motion for disqualification are simply allegations. There's been no tender of proof. There's no specific information. I certainly have no specific information, nor do I believe that the Commission has any specific information on the relevant timelines or when what happened or whether what was done constitutes sufficient basis for setting aside the previous orders. So I I just I think it's incorrect to state that we're it's it's not a foregone conclusion. And I think we should recognize that as we're considering this matter. Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez, whether or not it is a foregone conclusion, should the Commission reaffirm its original decision? Regardless of that point, wouldn't that be a option moving forward?
No, I again, I would I would prefer that remaining counsel have an opportunity to speak to the Commission. But I think, as Commissioner Dominguez correctly pointed out, there is only one matter properly before the Commission, and that's to affirm or reconsider the decision to stay the proceeding. And if CCNS and Hope choose on their own to withdraw their motion based on their own professional judgment, that's their prerogative. But we have one matter before the Commission, and that's simply to affirm or reconsider the previous order entering or staying the the present proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer, Counselor Sanchez. That is exactly what I was trying to articulate, but I didn't do it very well. Thank you. Okay, is there someone else that would like to speak at this time?
Mr. Vice Chair Jeff Wexler on behalf of Triad, one of the permities.
Thank you. Mr. Wexler, would you also keep your comments brief, as did Counselor Lovejoy?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I'll I'll address the the motion related to to former Chair Stringer and simply say, if I understand what petitioners are asking today, that is to postpone consideration of the motion to vacate until next meeting of the Commission, and we have no objection to that. I would point out, as Mr. Sanchez indicated, that there's been no offer of evidence showing actual bias, which is necessary as part of that legal standard. It's also difficult to understand the prejudice, given that there's been no substantive decisions from the Commission, and the Commission acts as a as a single whole. And at the end of the day, I would point out that the Commission, if if it chooses to, can simply ratify the decisions, prior decisions that it made. As to the motion to stay, it's it's troubling that we're here talking about this stay for the third or or fourth time. In each of the previous arguments, the Commission has voted overwhelmingly to maintain the stay until the resolution of the companion case on the same facility pending before the EAB. And this renewed motion to reconsider should be denied. I'll give three reasons very briefly. First, the petitioners haven't offered any persuasive reason for that decision to be revisited. And in its August 30th order entering the stay, the Commission identified six substantive reasons that a stay was prudent. Each and every one of those reasons remains as valid today as when the stay was entered, and the petitioners have really offered nothing in opposition to that. The second reason the Commission should reject the motion to stay is that petitioners offer no new facts, no new law to justify revisiting the stay. Instead, they just recycle the same tired arguments that have been rejected not once, but two or three times by the Commission. And in essence, they're just saying that you should reverse your decision because they they disagree with it. But that's true with every decision, and and with every decision, one of the parties is dissatisfied. But that's not enough to revisit reconsider a a decision. And petitioners have the burden of showing that there's some change in the law that compels granting a motion to consider, and they haven't done so. And finally, the Commission should reject the motion to consider this stay because simply put, it would establish a bad practice. It's not good policy to entertain repeated motions to reconsider, as the petitions are asking you to do here in any litigation at some point. Litigants simply have to accept the decision of the tribunal. And that point is now for the petitioners. The Commissioners should summarily reject this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Larry, did I see your hand up earlier? Commissioner Dominguez?
No, I I'm good. I think we had stuff covered. So I think we just need to proceed with hearing from the Environment Department.
Okay. Mr. De Roma, you had your hand up. I am not sure who you are. Maybe you could tell us a little bit who you are.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Silas De Roma, and I am counsel for DOE and NSA on this matter. And I only want to raise my hand to make the point that we concur with Mr. Wexler's position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before proceeding any further, Counselor Sanchez, there has been mentioned that the action taken or that needs to be taken today would either be to affirm or reject the previous action taken by this body. Is is there, after hearing the different councils' opinions, has that changed your recommendation to us?
Oh, Commissioner, but I think we should allow Mr. Attencio to speak before we proceed any further.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Attencio?
Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. Members of the Commission, I don't have too much to add, and we'll keep it very brief. In general, the the department concurs with the points that Mr. Wexler raised and the the points that it submitted in its response to to the pending motion on reconsidering the motion to vacate the stay. And we'll point out again that the Commission did find cause for this stay and so stated, and there's been no no evidence or arguments that had overcome that, again, just the same arguments in an attempt to short circuit the procedures that the Commission's established and the decisions that it's made thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Commissioners, Mr. Lovejoy would like to speak further. If anyone would like to hear him, please. If anyone would like to he hear him, please uh please so. Acknowledge. Okay, with that, I would accept a motion. As outlined in item six on our agenda, to affirm or reconsider the commission's previous order of stay. I have Vice Chair Cypher. Yes, Mister Dominguez.
Uh, thank you. Um I I don't think we need to drag this thing out. Um. I think uh. The fact that we have a motion. Um before the commission, we need to address. What's pending before us. Um I think it's premature to speculate about. The pending motion. I think we just need to address the motion to reconsider. And with that said, um. Our original motion to stay uh. Has been briefed. We've heard oral arguments uh before. We heard comments today. The commission had previously approved the stay for good cause. And nothing, nothing new or compelling has been presented in these briefings. So I would move to deny the motion to vacate. That's before us today.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Patton, I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Patton. Pam, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mister Vice Chair. Um I believe Commissioner Brankford has left. Commissioner Condolaria, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Raider?
Yeah.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez? Your vote, Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Zemlek?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate that. Uh that moves us to item seven on our agenda. Um I believe our process here and to help me out on this, if you would. Counselor Sanchez, but I think what we want to do is hear from Lisa Chai. And uh Counselor Pete Domenici. Um and I believe that's the steps we need to follow. Uh am I correct?
Vice Chair Cypher, you're correct. The the one thing uh and I've lost connectivity uh on. Accessing the docket for the commission momentarily, but the the initial question I had is. Who was representing who? Uh I understand that uh Ms. Chai is representing the department and. I wasn't clear who Mister Domenici was representing. I understood the doc, I mean, I'm sorry, the agenda says. He represents Sandoval County, but then we have the question of uh who is representing the. Uh I I believe it was vital. Again, I've lost connectivity. I I can't see the docket. But I think the the variance is being requested by Vital, so I'm not sure how that uh. How that's proceeding and who's representing. I I don't think there's been any entries of parents. That have been filed, so if uh counsel could initially speak to that, uh that'd be appreciated.
Counsel uh Domenici, are you representing Vital Holdings?
Uh yes, um Mister Chair and uh Counselor Sanchez, I represent Vital, the petitioner. And I did file.
Pardon me? Have you filed an entry?
Yes, I have.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh and Ms. Chai, of course, represents the department. Thank you. Uh because the Pam and I had had a discussion about this and. I didn't believe that Mister Domenici was representing Sandoval County. That's been clear now. Um the the council can proceed with uh. Speaking to the commission. Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher.
Thank you. Counselor D- Domenici, would you like to proceed?
Uh just, yes, just briefly. This is a petition to modify uh one phrase in the deed restriction. Of uh of an alternative abatement. Standard that has already been approved by this commission. Um we came before the commission about eighteen months ago, maybe a little less. To try to modify that one phrase through a motion and were directed to file another another petition. Uh and so we've gone ahead and filed that petition. We are, I think we are in the sixty day time period. For N M E D to file its formal response. And then looking at the the way the rules work is once their response is filed. We are entitled to have a hearing within ninety days. Uh and I, so I'm I'm kind of hoping we could actually schedule the hearing today. Um maybe Ms. Chai may be able to inform us when their response will be filed. But I think uh upon their response or even now. Uh we would need a hearing officer to be appointed. The primary pre-trial. Pre-hearing issue, or at least the first one, would be notice. And I think that that under the regulations, we we need a hearing date so we can then calculate how to provide notice and when it's due. And we need a hearing officer to weigh in potentially on the form of that notice. So I think uh a sort of an update, that's what we're looking for is a hearing date. A point, an appointment of a hearing officer and then we would use those to uh establish. The notice requirements and to satisfy those in time for the hearing.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Chai?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair. Um I agree with Mister Domenici's point that uh it would be helpful to. Receive a hearing date and the appointment of a hearing officer in order to fulfill the public notice requirements in rural. Um as to Mister Domenici's question about when the Bureau will issue its recommendations, they are forthcoming. Um I don't see any substantial delay on that, so I think that um. Whatever hearing date that the commission decides to assign will work for the Bureau and O G C. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh Mister Counselor Sanchez, um. So what we're looking for at this point then is. Um a a motion to set a date and to uh. To also select a hearings officer?
Vice Chair Cypher, typically that isn't done by motion. Uh I I would prepare a an order. Uh accepting the petition, setting the matter for hearing or leaving it to the hearing officer. It to his or her discretion to to set it, as long as we didn't run afoul of the prescribed time limitation. Uh and and so the again, setting up a a hearing date and uh. Appointing a hearing officer is what is the order of business for the commission, but I think you should allow, if you would, please. Uh Commissioners to to comment on the presentation that have been made by council.
Sure, that that's, that's great. Uh Commissioner Dominguez?
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Cypher, and I don't mean to. To hog the screen here, but um I'll offer up a a. A few comments and maybe some suggestions here. Um. I'm I'm very familiar with uh. What Mister Domenici is bringing forward. Um. I chaired the commission at the time that the previous variance was was issued. So familiar with the subject matter. So I think the issue at hand right now is we're handling this. As a variance request under twenty point one, point three, point eighteen. And so um. Environment Department has sixty days to uh respond to the petition. Uh the commission does need to assign a hearing officer. Uh because once the uh Environment Department uh responds. Uh some timelines move fairly quickly then, depending on what the Environment Department's response is. Uh one thing I will throw out that. Could potentially muddy the waters or not, and I would would probably like to hear back from. Uh Ms. Chai and Mister Domenici is that. Uh we're rapidly approaching the next legislative session. Although not in statute, the commission has historically. Not met during the legislative session. To prevent any potential conflicts of interest uh during that time span. So we're really. Uh forthcoming commission meetings is December and January. February and March get knocked out with the legislative session. And so then the next commission meeting after that would be April. So I do not uh would like to hear from Mister Domenici and Ms. Chai as far as. Prospects of a hearing date and maybe that helps us move forward. Thank you, Mister Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Uh Counselor Chai and Counselor Domenici. Uh can you comment as to Commissioner Dominguez's uh thoughts?
Uh yes, and I appreciate those comments. Uh we would like to see if we could get on the January agenda.
Okay, so that would be January tenth. Ms. Chai?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Dominguez and um Chair Cypher. I will need to consult with my clients about their availability, but at this point. Um the January agenda does seem to be the most favorable one.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Sanchez, with the suggestion of January tenth. Are we, we you, do we take that and run with it? Or are you saying that we don't need a motion?
No, I think that would, that's fine. We don't need a motion, although you can certainly make one. There's the remaining question of appointing a hearing officer. And uh I I guess if I can kind of shadow uh Commissioner Dominguez on this. We may have a logistical, a practical problem. Typically, if the commission will recall, we left it up to the water. Well, let me preface that by saying that uh. The the hearing officer is an employee of N M E D and as was the chair, the former chair. So it was very easy for there to be that communication in terms of availability of uh the hearing officer. Here we have, my understanding is there's an acting uh Deputy Secretary of Operations. Who would normally hit, like, I understand, and Ms. Chai, you can correct me on this. Uh took the place, at least in the acting or uh interim capacity of uh Stephanie Stringer. But we may have a a bit of a logistical problem in terms of uh finding out if Mister Shaquelin, who typically. Uh Ms. Stringer would look to for appointment is available uh as a hearing officer. If not. Uh I'm not sure how we would proceed. Uh there may be a contract hearing officer that would have to be employed.
Counselor Chai, can you add some light?
Um, yeah, thank you for that. Um Counselor Sanchez, I. Unfortunately, don't have information about who might be the next hearing officer for the January um meeting. I'll have to update the commission um in some manner, maybe through um. A joint email to both parties and um Counselor Sanchez and um Ms. Jones.
Yes, Commissioner Dominguez?
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. On um. Maybe I can offer this uh to uh. Get us a path forward and uh I'll. I'll do that. Uh in the form of a motion, so I would move that we accept. The petition for an alternative abatement standards marked as W Q C C. Twenty-two dash four five. And that the commission. Um provide the vice chair the uh authority to. Work to assign a hearing officer for this matter. And that the hearing officer can work with the parties. To formulate a hearing date. And I'll stop the motion there.
Thank you, Counselor Dominguez. Do we have a second?
Mister Chair, this is Commissioner Thompson. I second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Pam, can you please provide a roll call vote for us?
Yes. Uh Commissioner Condolaria, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Raider?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlek?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Pam. Yes.
Just a a housekeeping matter in that regard. Uh Ms. Chai, can you get back to um. Vice Chair Cypher as quickly as possible on the availability of a hearing officer, either Mister Shaquelin or someone. By a a contract hearing officer and if we would copy Mister Domenici. On all that correspondence in the event that he might have some concern or objection about uh. Who the designated hearing officer might be, um just so we can have a hearing officer in place as quickly as possible and. The parties can look to that hearing officer for on procedural matters. Thanks.
I can do that. Thank you for that comment, Counselor Sanchez. Would you also like to be copied on that correspondence?
Uh, not necessarily. Uh Miss Commit, Vice Chair Cypher will continue to sit on the commission chair. And I I smile as I say that. Uh so he would, he could in turn inform me who that person is. And or fill in the order. I'll prepare the form of of order. Uh and he can just simply fill in the blank once he has that information.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you both. So uh that takes us to item eight on our agenda. Um I look to the two counselors and and I want to make sure I understand this. From N M A D's representative, uh Counselor Atencio, would that be you? That will be presenting?
Yes, Vice Chair Cypher.
Okay, great. And who will be presenting as counsel for the Jones family? Is that Jason Wexler?
Yes, that's correct. That's Jason Wexler.
Okay, that is wonderful. Uh thank you, counselors. Uh let's start with um. Mister Atencio, uh counselor?
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Cypher, members of the commission. Uh just to be clear, did you uh just want an introduction or do, would you like me to go ahead and present? Uh this agenda item uh before.
Can you do both, please?
Sure. Uh well, this matter, uh as as you can see on the agenda there, W Q C C twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Uh arose from a compliance order issued by the Groundwater Quality Bureau. Uh I'm here today representing the Groundwater Quality Bureau. Uh, I'm here today representing the Groundwater Quality Bureau, uh, pardon, New Mexico Environment Department. Uh, and in the course of this, um, uh, this enforcement proceeding, um, and subsequent to the issue of the administrative compliance order, uh, Mr. Wexler and the Jones Family Trust provided information and, um, really brought to attention, um, things in the department's records uh, that it had inadvertently overlooked, uh, in, in issuing this ACO. Uh, based on that, um, the department determined, uh, that the, the ownership and, and the responsibility and, um, really the, the involvement in the operation that led to, uh, the, the compliance order, uh, were not properly placed on the Jones Family Trust. Uh, and as such, uh, entered into this settlement agreement, which is before you, uh, for consideration today. The, the department submitted this settlement agreement, which essentially removes, um, the Jones Family Trust, uh, from this proceeding. Um, and, uh, requires no further action, uh, upon, on coming into compliance. Uh, with that, the department submitted a number of exhibits, uh, to demonstrate, uh, the, the information that had been brought to its, uh, its attention. I think the, the agreement and those exhibits really speak for themselves. Um, but I'd be happy to ask her any questions and, um, would respectfully ask if the Commission approved, uh, the settlement agreement estimate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Was there any further questions of Mr. Atencio? Okay, Counselor Wexler?
Well, thank you, Commissioners. Um, I would just add that, uh, on behalf of the trust, we had been communicating with the department, uh, back, um, in or around, I believe it was March of last year, informing them of, of the trust's position with respect to, uh, uh, who the proper parties are for, maintenance, operation, oversight, supervision of this facility, and did get some confirmation from the department, um, back in that timeframe that the, the trust was not going to be looked at as a responsible party for this system. And as Mr. Atencio mentioned, just when, when the issue arose with, uh, um, um, a leak in the system, when they went to look at the records, there was, there was some oversight. I think they had overlooked, uh, some of our prior correspondence and determination by the department that the trust was not responsible. So, uh, I was happy that they, um, were able to look back at their records when I informed them of such, and, uh, after double checking, confirmed that, um, the trust is not, was added in error and is not, uh, a responsible party for this system. So we'd appreciate the Commission's review and approval of the settlement agreement to that effect.
Thank you, Counselor Wexler. Commission, uh, Commissioner Dominguez?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. Now that we've heard from, from both parties, I have a, a follow-up question for, um, Mr. Atencio. Uh, just so that we get things very clear for the Commission.
Yes, please proceed, Joe.
This specific settlement agreement is in reference to the Jones Family Trust. Um, specific to the, um, not the other parties involved. Is that correct?
Uh, Vice Chair Cypher, Commissioner Dominguez, yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay, and then a follow-up question, uh, that's separate from this settlement agreement, uh, is, is my assumption correct then that there's still pending enforcement actions involving the other parties?
Uh, Vice Chair Cypher, Commissioner Dominguez, uh, that, the matter as it pertains to the other parties is still pending. Uh, you are correct. We have, uh, met with the hearing officer on, on scheduling uh, and are presently engaged in, in talking through that in, in hopes of settlement. Uh, I can't go into that any further, um, but, but that is pending, and, and we are talking and are working with the hearing officer.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Atencio. I just wanted to, to try to parse out the, the pieces that they use so that, uh, the Commission kind of has a, a clear vision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. Do we have any other Commissioners that would like, uh, to have questions answered or clarifications? If not, what we need is a motion, uh, to propose either, uh, acceptance, modification, or rejection of the agreement. Yes, Counselor Sanchez?
That's right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, Commissioner Dominguez, uh, asked pretty much the same questions I was about to ask. But one point of clarification, uh, Mr. Counsel, uh, Atencio, I, I heard you say that the, the appropriate action in this case was to remove the Jones Family Trust from the enforcement proceeding. Is that, is that correct?
That's the department's position, yes.
Okay, uh, so, so I'm, I, I guess I'm a little confused. Why, why did the department simply just not dismiss them from the proceeding? Uh, or is there something else in the settlement agreement that also pertains here?
Counsel Sanchez, uh, Vice Chair Cypher, our, our understanding is, since this has been, um, essentially, uh, a request for review before the, the WQCC, uh, it seems like the appropriate, um, jurisdiction here would be within the Commission. Uh, and while the department, um, is willing to settle with the Jones Family Trust and, and has indeed done so, uh, because there is a, an active matter pending before the Commission, uh, we felt to be appropriate to, uh, to go through, um, that procedure in, in having this settlement agreement approved.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, the, the other question I had, um, and the question Commissioner Dominguez clarified this. We still have, uh, Frank Agos and the Mesa Grande Development, uh, as remaining respondents or parties. Uh, typically, at least drawing a parallel to civil procedure where there's a settlement and in a proceeding that involves multiple parties, there's typically language included in the stipulated order, uh, accepting the settlement that there's no fur, there's no reason to not, uh, if you will, preclude further jurisdiction over the parties that have settled. Is that something that you would intend to include in your stipulated order?
Uh, excuse me, uh, Counsel Sanchez, I am, I believe we submitted a proposed order. Uh, and if that is not in there, um, we could, uh, discuss with Mr. Wexler and, and consider, considering that as a, as part of the proposed stipulated final order.
Yeah, my, my reason for that is because it would effectively then, uh, close the door on the proceeding with respect to the parties that have settled, and, uh, there wouldn't be no jurisdictional question of, of a reopening with respect to those parties. Uh, if, uh, if counsel feels it's advisable to do that, I, I'd appreciate a, a, a revised order uh, for submission to Vice Chair Cypher. Thank you.
If I, if I may, this is Jason Wexler, uh, Commissioner Sanchez, um, just a point of clarification. Could you reiterate again that particular language that you were suggesting?
I, I don't have the particular language, but, uh, if you look at the rules of civil procedure, uh, that you can look to for, uh, again, guidance, uh, since we don't have anything that speaks to that matter, uh, there's a, there's language, and I believe, uh, the rules of procedure that speaks to, to a settlement agreement, uh, a stipulated order on a settlement agreement where there's multiple parties involved. I don't have that in hand, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Sanchez, but what, what I understand moving forward, what we need is a motion, once again, to, uh, accept or modify or reject this settlement agreement with the revised stipulation order as, um, described by yourself.
That'd be correct, but that only would pertain if, if the Commission accepted the proposed, uh, settlement agreement.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Cypher?
Yes, Commissioner Dominguez?
I would make a motion that the Commission, um, approve the pre, proposed settlement agreement between Jones Family Trust and New Mexico Environment Department. And that a, um, stipulated final order be drafted and, um, finalized by the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Commissioner McWilliams likes, uh, second in motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Pam, we have a first and a second, uh, motion to accept, um, can, to accept the agreement uh, with a revised stipulation order agreement. Uh, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Condolaria, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fry?
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Zemlik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cypher?
Yes.
The motion passes, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate that. So that moves us to number nine on the agenda, nine A. Uh, just to make things simple, I wanted to get placed on the next agenda, selecting a new Commission Chair. As to my eligibility, I just wanted to share with everybody that I, uh, have thought about it, and I really don't feel like, um, I have the time needed to dedicate to the position. So I would like to respectfully withdraw my name from consideration at this time. I would not mind staying on as Vice Chair if, if, uh, so desired. But as far as Chair at this time in, uh, my personal, uh, commitments, I don't think I could do that. That, that would mean that any, um, consideration, uh, for a new Commission Chair should be thought about and presented, uh, in nomination format at, uh, the next, uh, meeting, Commission meeting. Any questions or thought on that?
Uh, Vice Chair Cypher? This is Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes, sir.
As usual, as, um, I seem to be the one to, to muddy the water. Um, timing seems to be impeccable here. Um, and I'll explain why and, um, of course, with today being Election Day, um, there's still uncertainty of what state agencies may look like by our December WQCC meeting. So huge question mark there. Uh, the other part of that is, uh, Environment Department seems to be going through some transition issues in their upper administration. And have no idea whether we will have somebody from the Environment Department on the Commission that's full-time, or if it's potentially will just be somebody acting in December. So with all of that said, although we can still have it as an agenda item, is there's a lot of uncertain, uncertainty of what the makeup of the Commission may be in December. So, uh, I appreciate your offer of remaining as Vice Chair because we might have to lean on you a little bit to get us through December and January if needed before we've got a solid slate of Commissioners to take up that particular, um, action item. So I don't know if that helps paint the picture, or if all I did was create the need for a TMDL, which we don't have time to do rulemaking to do that. So, yeah.
Commissioner Dominguez, I, I, I think you've brought up some great points. And in the holiday season to boot, I, I think that, uh, I, I would, I would say that I, I don't mind, um, acting as Chair for the December thirteenth and January tenth meetings, if that's the desire of the Commission. Um, but could we hear some other Commissioners speak to it? If, if you're comfortable with delaying our decision until April eleventh, I'm, I'm okay with that. Well, that's, that's a resounding response.
This is Commissioner Fry. I have my hand up. I don't know if you can see that.
I, I did, I see it now. Thank you.
Um, I, I'm fine with delaying. Um, uh, I have my hand up because I was going to request, um, whether it be, um, Counsel Sanchez or someone else who can go through the procedure with us either now or in a future meeting, um, since I and, uh, maybe one or two other people are new to the, to the Commission here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Vice Chair Cypher, I'll be glad to, uh, Commissioner, just by way of background, seventy-four dash six dash three sets out, uh, what co, who constitutes or what individuals constitute the, the Commission. And basically, the first ten positions are, uh, Department Secretaries or Directors of State Agencies or their designees. And then, uh, and that includes, um, as, as Commissioner Dominguez was speaking, to the, the Secretary of Environment or his or her designee. And then the remaining four members are appointed, uh, let me just scroll down here momentarily. Uh, are, are members of, of the, um, of, of the public. Uh, and they're appointed by the Governor for terms of four years. Uh, so typically, there is no hard, fast rule as to who is eligible to serve on Commission Chair. It's by vote of the, by nomination and vote of the Commission. Uh, it can be either, any, any one member, uh, as Commissioner Cypher and I have discussed in our conversations, uh, it can be, uh, any, any one Commissioner. Uh, it doesn't have to be as it's been, I think, in recent history. The designee of the NMED, the Secretary of the Environment, uh, that I think has often been done for, uh, convenience's sake. We've been told that Water Quality Control Commission does not have its own budget. Uh, it's a minis, uh, a Water Quality Control Commission is administrative, but attached to NMED. So there is that, that proximity, if you will, that facilitates, uh, a number of matters, but that's not, uh, pivotal or necessary. Uh, the, unfortunately- Uh, the, unfortunately, what it also does create is the need for a kind of a, a Chinese wall. Because you want, it, it become, it can be difficult for, uh, the Water Quality Control Commission Chair if he or she is a designee of environment to, uh, wear two hats. One is as an NMED employee and as a Water Quality Control Commission Chair. Uh, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Council. Um, yeah, I'm specifically asking about the procedures. So the nominations and the votes are made in the same meeting or how does that work?
It's, it's typically the, yeah, it's typically the floor is open. In this case, Vice Chair Cypher would open, uh, the floor for nominations of, uh, Water Quality Control Commission Chair. There would be nominations at some point. He would close the, the call for nominations and a vote would be made or cast for the nominees that have been, uh, that have been identified. Uh, and it would be by majority vote that the commission chair would be selected.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Cypher, to, uh, maybe offer up, um, a little more background for Commissioner Fry and/or other commissioners that are relatively new to the commission. The Water Quality Act is, is pretty basic as far as, uh, election of a, a chair. It, it specifically just states the commission shall elect a chair and other necessary officers and shall keep a record of its proceedings. So it's pretty cut and dry. The process historically, um, for many, many years, there was only a chair. Sometime, uh, should, um, I, probably ten or twelve years ago, it was determined that at times it's difficult for the chair to always be at every meeting. And therefore it would be convenient to have a vice chair in order to fill in behind the chair in case of, of somebody missing a meeting. And, um, and so that's how the vice chair she came about, and that has proved to be helpful at times because the workload can be fairly heavy on, on the chair at times. Uh, and the last thing we want to occur is for the commission's work to not proceed because one person cannot make it to a meeting. So we've, uh, in recent years had both a chair and a vice chair. Historically speaking, as Counsel Sanchez has indicated, I think the, the chair had pretty much always been either the Secretary of the Environment Department or the designee for the Environment Department. Uh, there's only been one other instance where, uh, somebody outside of that served as chair for, I don't know, three or four years. Um, as Counselor Sanchez indicated, the fact that the commission's, um, administrative body is tied to the Environment Department. Uh, the chair does a fair amount of work both with our council and the administrative staff, uh, that does all of the, the boatload of work behind the scenes for the commission. So there's a, a pretty close tie to the amount of work, uh, working with, with Pam, uh, to get things done as well as, uh, Counsel Sanchez. Um, so I just offer that up for perspective. To help hopefully just kind of frame, frame it, but, um, it will be, we just place it as an agenda item for a particular meeting and, uh, and the nominations come from the floor. And, uh, commissioners can either panic and run from the room or step up to the table, uh, whatever the situation may be. While I still have the floor, I, uh, was wanting, wondering about the December meeting, uh, whether we would even have a December meeting. Uh, Pam, do we have things already docketed for December?
I, I don't have them docketed yet. I have received some petitions that I'm, that I'm looking through and need to forward on to the vice chair. But, uh, at this point, the only thing that would be on that agenda would be this, um, nomination and election if you choose to put it there.
Uh, so the point being, we might not even have a December meeting. So, um, I think I'm back to the point of, of thanking Vice Chair Cypher for, uh, for, uh, herding cats and being willing to, uh, continue to herd cats and until we get to a solid slate of commissioners and we could, uh, take up this action item. Thank you, Vice Chair Cypher. Hopefully that, uh, maybe provided a thirty thousand foot viewpoint.
Commissioner Dominguez, that was awesome. Thank you for your time on that. Uh, Counselor Sanchez, um, just a, a couple of quick items. Um, I, I know that if, if, uh, our next meeting, if we do cancel the December uh, thirteenth meeting, I know you've received a lot of, uh, items that we did not put on the agenda. Do any of those things that we're working, that you're working on, um, look like things that are urgent and need to be on the December thirteenth agenda?
Vice Chair Cypher, I, I can't, uh, give you a particular answer in that regard. What we have is, uh, and the commission has been blind carbon copied on this. Very recently, the, the Oil and Gas Division, uh, Director, I believe, issued a, a letter basically telling all people that are in the oil and gas industry that they need to file water discharge permits. Um, that's a complete reversal and turnaround from, uh, previous, uh, Oil and Gas Division position. There's, there's some genuine questions as to whether they're properly before the, that matters properly before the commission. I, I don't know how that, uh, if you'll forgive the next, I don't know how that will shake out. So I'm not sure whether those will be mattered. Oh, I think there's Pam, uh, ten petitions, is it, or so nine or ten petitions?
There's nine petitions, yes.
Yeah, that, that, um, may need to be heard only for purposes of setting them. So we don't run afoul of the ninety day period, but I don't know how that's going to, uh, uh, develop in, in the, in the, in the coming weeks.
If we were to set that and if we were to need, uh, a determination of whether we're even the appropriate body to hear this, that would still need to be set on our agenda. We could discuss that and for lack of a better word, remand it back to the Oil and Gas Commission to, uh, clarify their position.
I don't think we would be doing that at the next, at the December meeting. I think we would be setting it up for, uh, full hearing and deliberation by the commission at a subsequent time.
Okay. So you're, when you say a subsequent time, perhaps January tenth, but certainly not December thirteenth?
Certainly not December thirteenth.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones, do you have any, uh, concerns or things you know about coming down the track that we, um, should definitely need to get scheduled on December thirteenth? Or are we, uh, clear to, um, cancel that meeting?
Other than what we've just spoken about, I don't have anything set on the December agenda.
Counselor Sanchez, uh, we have to counsel, uh, when we cancel a meeting, is that done by, uh, motion?
No, it's done by notice, uh, Vice Chair Cypher. If, um, if the commission looks at its, uh, Open Meetings Act annual resolution, there's actually a provision that provides that if there is no business to be transacted by the commission, that a meeting can be canceled. So what could certainly be done is the meeting could be, Pam would have, could certainly give the ten day public notice under the Open Meetings Act and, uh, it, uh, just as a safeguard to, to make sure that that's OMA compliance is, is, is satisfied or, and, and then the meeting could be canceled by, by public notice.
Okay. Uh, just history, uh, Commissioner Dominguez, has it been, um, well, for lack of a better word, common that December, February and March be canceled?
I'll take that twofold. Um, December, January is, is been totally depended upon workload before the commission. So there's, there's been many years that we have met both December and January because there were motions or actions before the commission that, that, um, had to be dealt with. Um, now regarding February, March, depending on the given year, whether we're in a short legislative session or a long one, it has been the rule of thumb that the commission does not meet during the session to prevent the possibility of actions being before the commission that could wind up being biased by everything going on in, in Santa Fe during the legislative session. So with, the commission has typically tried to schedule stuff outside of the legislative, uh, timeframe to prevent, uh, any potential conflicts of interest. So that sometimes has taken a little bit of work to make that happen. But I would say December and January are still, um, real possibilities. Um, even though at the moment there's not too much, um, solid for December, I would say we've typically just handled it as tentatively, there's not much there, but that could change, uh, if Pam's, um, desk gets covered up. And then the, ultimately the decision is, is is made by, at this point, the vice chair as to whether a meeting will be held in December or not. And so I would say commission members need to keep that date open. But it sort of looks optimistic that maybe we'll get a reprieve in December. Um, does that help you out, uh?
That does, Commissioner Dominguez, and if I understand, uh, Counselor Sanchez correctly, that is, uh, administrative call. And, uh, I think what I'd like to do then, if, if I've got that authority, I will go ahead and make a decision that December thirteenth is still viable. We'll notify the commission if that, um, if, if we do not get much on the agenda, we will cancel that meeting. But we, let's formally cancel the, uh, February and March meeting at this time for the legislature. And again, Counselor Sanchez, if that needs to be by motion, we can do that. Uh, can you? No. Okay. So I'm here, I'm seeing, uh, Commissioner, uh, Dominguez saying we don't need to take that, uh, to a vote. So unless there's a loud objection, I'll, I'll hear it now from any commissioner. But right now we will take February and March off and potentially December. We will plan on the January tenth meeting to conduct business. Is there anyone else that has concerns about that? Okay, I think that's it then for consideration of future meetings and also for consideration of selecting a new chairman, uh, right now that, uh, that is slated for January tenth, when we'll consider nominations and voting. Is, I, I, I think, uh, that could change, but right now that's the way we'll schedule it. If, if April eleventh better suits, the, uh, the dust settles, we, we'll move it to, uh, April eleventh as well. So I, I, in other words, I heard you. I heard you, uh, Commissioner Dominguez. With that, uh, are there other items, uh, that we need to talk about? Going once, going twice, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting. And I want to thank everybody for their patience with my ignorance. It was, it was a, a fun, uh, a fun go. And, uh, Counselor Sanchez and Pam, thank you very much. We will see everybody at least on January tenth. Look forward to it. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.